Let's call me into order with a clerk, please call the board.
Trustee Daley?
Present.
Trustee Medei?
Present.
Trustee Dunham?
Present.
Trustee Sullivan?
Present.
Trustee Conley?
Present.
Trustee Kozak?
Here.
President Larson?
Here. This time I'd like to introduce the PAC. 199 are here to post the colors and witness in a pledge of allegiance.
Will the audience please rise? Caller guard, attention. Caller guard advance. Present the colors. Will the audience please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Two. Caller guards about face. Caller guards are safe.
Could we have the scouts advance again, please? I mean, all the scouts. He's cost a quarter of a piece, so come on.
Thank you, your honor. Say thank you, gentlemen.
Welcome, welcome. Like the calf.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, guys. Thank you. Motion approved the minutes to March 27th is in order?
So moved.
Second?
Moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both motion carries. You have a list of bills for expenditures and additions and... A motion is in order for approval? Move to approve the expenditures as presented.
Second.
Move to second to approve the expenditures as presented with the clerk, call the board.
Trustee Daley?
Aye.
Trustee Medei?
Aye.
Trustee Conley?
Aye.
Trustee Kozak?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Dunham?
Aye.
Six a votes, no nays, motion carries. You have attached to the regular agenda consent agenda, it'll take one note, motion from the village board to approve all the items on the consent agenda. Someone has a question or concern at that time, please indicate that and we'll refer to...
Commissioner Schneider couldn't make it this evening, so he's asked that we push that presentation back to the next village board meeting.
Sorry. Well, once again, you have attached to the regular agenda consent agenda, it'll take one motion from the village board to approve all the items on the consent agenda. Someone has a concern or a question on the item as per the absence of Tim Snyder, we'll place on committee reports. And now I turn the agenda over to our village clerk, Mary Car.
The consent agenda, one, liquor licenses. The motion would be... The motion would be to recommend the village board approve a request from the 2018 Memorial Day Observance Planning Committee for one Class D one-day liquor license for the Memorial Day Observance and Picnic at 202 East Schaumburg Road on Monday, May 28, 2018, and waive the license fee. Two, proclamations, Fair Housing Month, April 2018. Three, finance, legal, and administrative and general government. The motion would be to recommend to the village board approve the seventh annual payment for Motorola radios and issue a purchase order to the Northwest Central Dispatch System of Arlington Heights in the amount of $94,391.52. The motion would be to recommend the village board waive competitive bidding and approve a resolution authorizing the village manager... Okay. Authorizing the village manager to execute an agreement renewing the Tyler Technology Contract through April 30, 2021, and issue a purchase order in the amount of $323,008. The motion would be to approve... Approve a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a two-year agreement between AT&amp;T and the Village of Schaumburg for phone services under the Complete Link Discount Program. The motion would be to issue a purchase order for technical staffing services to Sierra ITS of Park Ridge, Illinois, in the amount of $378,000. Four, transportation committee. The motion would be to accept Six North Aviation's application to operate a flight school at the Schaumburg Regional Airport for the purpose of flight training and approve the required resolution. B, the motion would be to authorize the village manager to execute an agreement with the MV Transportation of Dallas, Texas, for operation of the Dial-A-Ride Transportation Bus Service for an amount not to exceed $1,283,122 for FY 1819, subsequent optional renewal years, and approve the required resolution. The motion would be to authorize extending the DART service area to include Schaumburg Township offices and Conan High School. Five, planning, building, and development. The motion would be to approve the 2017 CDBG Action Plan Amendment and refer the plan to the Plan Commission for Public Hearing. Six, zoning board of appeals. The motion would be to approve amendments to Chapter 154 of the Municipal Code to create the North District West Zoning District ND West.
Madam clerk, we'd like to have that item removed and discussed under committee reports as long as the accompanying ordinance, which is number 9A.
Okay. The motion would be to approve a special use for Internet auto sales facility for CRS Auto Group 1449 Payne Road. The motion would be to approve parking lot directional sign variations and a variation to allow additional items of information for L.K. Plastics 1365 Mitchell Boulevard. D, the motion would be to approve a variation for off-premise ground sign for medieval times 2001 North Roselle Road. E, the motion would be to approve a site plan, special use for a Type C restaurant, special use for a drive-through, drive-through facility hours variation, parking variation, parking setback variation, landscape buffer variation, and foundation landscape variation for Starbucks 1080 to 1082 South Roselle Road. Seven, award of bid. The motion would be to award the bid for maintenance of natural areas services to Tall Grass Restoration of Schaumburg, Illinois, and authorize the issuance of a purchase order in the amount not to exceed $42,079. B, the motion would be to award the bid for the 2018 contract repair program, concrete repair program, to the lowest responsible bidder, Schroder &amp; Schroder, Inc. of Skokie, Illinois, and authorize the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $1,448,084. Eight, resolutions. The motion would be to adopt as Resolution 1803-5 authorizing village manager to execute an amendment to existing agreement between the Village of Schaumburg and Tyler Technologies, Inc. B, excuse me, the motion would be to adopt as Resolution R 18-036 authorizing village manager to execute an agreement between the Village of Schaumburg and AT&amp;T for phone line services 2018 to 2020. C, the motion would be to adopt as Resolution R 18-037 authorizing the village manager to execute a license agreement by and between the Village of Schaumburg and Six North Aviation. D, the motion would be to adopt as Resolution R 18-038 authorizing the village manager to execute an agreement for Dial-A-Ride Transportation, DART, bus service with MV Transportation. Nine ordinances. A, that ordinance is pulled again for further discussion. And that would be an ordinance amending Chapter 154 of the Municipal Code to create the North District West Zoning District ND West new section. B, the motion would be to waive as first reading and adopt as ordinance 18-46 granting special use for Internet auto facility, auto sales facility for CRS Auto Group 1449 Payne Road. C, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance...
It'd be 47 and we'll come back and make 45.
B would be 45, C would be 46. Okay. C, the motion would be to first... Waive first reading and adopt as ordinance 18-046 granting parking lot directional sign variations and variation to allow additional items of information for L.K. Plastics 1365 Mitchell Boulevard. D, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance 18-047 an ordinance granting a variation to allow an off-premise ground sign for medieval times 2001 North Roselle Road. E, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance 18048 granting site plan approval, special use for Type C restaurant, special use for a drive-through, drive-through facility hours variation, parking variation, parking setback variation, landscape buffer variation, and foundation landscape variation for Starbucks at 18... At 1080 and 1082 South Roselle Road. That concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Motion on the consent agenda is in order?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented with the two items previously referenced having been pulled.
Second.
Moved to second, with a clerk, please poll the board.
Trustee Daley?
Aye.
Trustee Medei?
Aye.
Trustee Dunham?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Conley?
Aye.
Trustee Kozak?
Aye.
Six a votes, no nays, motion carries. Committee reports? I am referred to or taken from the consent agenda and referred to the committee, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, I requested that items 6A and items... Item 9A be polled from the consent agenda and discussed further under committee reports. These are two items that have been through the zoning board of appeals. There are favorable recommendations on the agenda this evening. However, there was a resident of the Village of Palatine who attended the zoning board proceedings and made several comments related to these items. My understanding is he's here in attendance this evening and he does want to address the village board on this matter. Before that happens, I'd like Julie Fitzgerald to step to the podium and just give a brief summary of what these items are so that the audience and the members of the board are aware. And then, Mayor, you can call the resident of Palatine to the podium and he can make his comments and we can have further discussion. Julie?
Well, as Mr. Townsend stated, the resident did attend the zoning board both times and expressed similar, maybe not quite the same concerns, but similar concerns. So I'll divide them up into a few categories. One having been the financial implications that TIF and development within a TIF would have on the Palatine Park District. Some of the other ones have to do with implementation-type items related to the pathways that are existing and planned throughout the development and connecting of the green space. The third one would be the amount of green space within the development. This resident, and again, he is an elected member of the Palatine Parks Board, believes that there should be additional green space on the site and specifically expressed a concern regarding some of the green space being in more natural areas. And lastly, there's been a concern expressed, well, I guess, two other things, one of which was parking. And then, lastly, a concern expressed regarding the number of residential units that could be constructed on the property. The property is split up into five zones, one being the park, and then four other zones. The zoning code that's in front of you for review tonight allows residential development within three of those four other zones. Zone A, which is the large kind of lot office area adjacent to the tollway, no residential is permitted. The other districts permit some residential in various forms, either as permitted or special uses. And I can answer any questions you may have regarding that because I do understand that it is within a very legally written zoning ordinance.
Would you be...
But what I want to point out on that is there's a few things going. So there's the areas that you can... That a developer can do residential, the type of residential. Then there's some triggers within the ordinance that... That would keep the property from being developed essentially 100% residential. And one of those triggers has to do with the amount of residential that can be built as office space is added to the property. And kind of right out of the gate, there's about 1.6 million square feet of office space. So that means that a developer could come in and do roughly 3,000 units on the rest of the property. That said, the market studies, the market research that the village consultants have done and the extensive studies that the developers have done show that only roughly 2,400 to 2,700 units will be constructed on the site. This is a long-term plan, so of course that can change. But what I want to point out is that the code as written would allow for more to be built if more... If a lot of office becomes built on the site. And so while we don't envision that, it is allowed under the ordinance. And so it becomes a little confusing when you talk about the different scenarios and some of that is laid out in some materials that I believe this resident would like to provide for you tonight. So I can answer any other questions, but that gives sort of a generalized summary of what the issues are.
I'd like to call the petitioner forward and have him make his presentation. That's a cue.
Yeah, it's the resident who wants to speak on this matter, not the petitioner, so. Staff is the... No, sir, you can come forward. Staff is actually the petitioner in this change.
Hi, my name is Jay Kozak. I've been a Palatine Park Commissioner, Park District Commissioner for over 27 years now, and I have reviewed a lot of different real estate developments for the Palatine Park District, mostly in Rolling Meadows and Palatine. Now, I'm a resident of Rolling Meadows, but I'm here representing the Palatine Park District. We have 80,000 residents in the Palatine Park District. And this is mostly an issue of... Number one, it's a TIF zone. The reason I'm here is this is a TIF zone. And there is a master plan that was released by the Village of Schaumburg showing a large amount of resident... Residential units north of the Central Road, I should say, the Palatine Township, Schaumburg Township Line, which means a lot of the residences are going to be north of the line, which happens to be the Palatine Park District. Now, we do have a lot of residences of the Village of Schaumburg in the Palatine Park District already. When you look at the plan, the master plan, there's very little residential south of the line and a lot of residential north of the line. Bottom line, that's why I'm here. And I've talked to the other park commissioners and my Director of Parks, who has talked to the Schaumburg Park District Director. Mr. Townsend, I do have... I do have a three-page, I should say, Mr. Larson, Brian, I've got a... Something I could give to the trustees as I discuss. I'm not going to try to take a lot of time, but I just wanted to kind of put this on the record.
Can you give that to the clerk?
I passed mine down.
Sorry, we got 36 pages of minutes.
I know you've got a large stack of papers there.
Yeah, I didn't read it all, I don't.
Okay. This is pretty much...
Sure.
Okay. This is more of an issue of residences, residential units and green space. That's basically what this is. This is really a key thing here. I don't want to... I'm not going to read this word by word, but what I'd like to point out is... I'd like to do the zoning things at the very end because this... You are trying to... You are considering an ordinance tonight that's got a certain language in there that I, in a way, have to question. I do like the plan. It is... It's... I really... I know hundreds and hundreds of hours have gone into the master plan and to the TIF agreement also, and I do appreciate that. So when it was made clear that a lot of residential units are going to be north of the Palatine Township Line, we reviewed everything as best we could and trying to understand from the perspective of the development, the development department and zoning and what you're going to be considering tonight. You're going to find that... Now, this is a TIF zone, so no additional tax revenue is going to be going to the Palatine Park District. We're going to be frozen at the level that it is in 2012, 2013. So whatever park amenities are going to be on this property will be up to the TIF district to decide and pay for and the developers at the same time. We are going to get some tax revenue, but we're frozen at the 2013 level, 20, 21 years. So that becomes a concern. What you have here, as Julie Fitzgerald pointed out, that right from the get-go, a lot of residential units can be built on this property without another square foot of office space being built on the property. And a lot of the residential is being pushed north of the Palatine Township Line. Take a look... On my write-up that I did here, and I'm just going to kind of go through this, the bike path pedestrian walkways, great job. When the group put together the plan, they tied it together incredibly well with bike paths, which means it's not a four-foot sidewalk. It's a... It's an eight-to-10-foot bike pedestrian way that we all think is very valuable in our communities. I just want to make sure, in my dealings with the Palatine Park District and other government entities, just make sure the easements are in place. Sometimes developments are made and the easements aren't there, so we have to go begging for easements after the fact. What you have here is a clean slate. Let's make sure the easements are in place. And Julie pretty much said they're in place. The TIF agreement apparently has assured us that the easements would be there. I know that, as far as the bike and pedestrian access is concerned, the master plan does have arrows pointing to the west and pointing to the east. This is the west portion of this planned district, and next you're going to consider the eastern development on the other side of Meacham Road. And it would be ideal if sooner rather than later, the safe pedestrian bicycle access could be planned and built as these developments are being done. And it was suggested that a bike bridge, that a bridge would be suitable for that very busy road with the amount of people that are being added to this area. And then there's an arrow pointed to the west in the master plan, and that's a big open area that the Catholic Archdiocese owns and that the Water District has control over also. And there is a... The thought was, oh, we'll extend Central Road west eventually and maybe even a bike way eventually. Currently, there is a berm that goes from the southwest part of Motorola all the way over to Sunstar. It's about a mile length, and it'd be very easy to develop if the easements are obtained by the village, by the Schaumburg Park District. That is the Schaumburg Park District side, and it would be an incredible addition because it would increase the value of this property that we're considering tonight with the Paul Douglas seven-mile loop. And if residences get wind of that, they'll say, that's great. This is where I want to live. And that goes along with the eastern bridge also. The more amenities we add, the more the residents will want to move into this area. I don't mind the residents moving in. I want this development to look good and, from a recreation standpoint, do the right thing for the people. 3,000, 5,000, 8,000 people that might live in this area, depending how it's all developed. So that's it with the bike path, residential path. Great job with that. What I've got, I just have those suggestions. The green areas. When you look at the master plan, there is a... The green areas that will be developed by the developer and by the TIF agreement, there's North Park with the pond. The pond is already there, and the developer and the village, I think, are planning on increasing the size of that area of the pond for water retention and improving it. And all I'm saying, and all I'd like to suggest in my suggestions, is make sure this is developed as the residential's are being built because that's going to sell the property too. And it will make it very attractive for people north of here to come down. The 10-acre Greenway Park, very nice. The one suggestion I had was take that Greenway Park and, as it goes north, if you know anything about... If you want to look at the master plan, it kind of pinches... It pinches inwards as it gets to the center of the property, and then it hits the north pond. My suggestion is widening that pinch point out to make a true central park for this urban, urban-developed area. It is a more dense property. And when you call it dense, that means, you know, as opposed to some of the other town home complexes that Veteran Schaumburg or Palatine or Rolling Meadows, the density in the residential's means there's no front yards, there's no backyards, there might be small courtyards, but because of the parking constraints and so on, you're taking a lot of the green space away. There are no front yards and backyards and side yards. So I think the central park should be made larger. I think we're missing five acres or perhaps even 10 acres of green space in this urban area. So my suggestion is, just as Olmsted would, you make the southern part of the Central Park more recreation, more leisure and active space, and then gradually go towards the north, which is a more natural area. That's the 14-acre pond, which is already there. Okay? That's what I've got on the park one. I also thought, as the Park District reviewed this, that there should be some type of... Some type of park or playlot within the residential area, right smack dab in the middle of it, very walkable, because I know that the projections are, well, we're going to have 150 kids live in this neighborhood. 3,000 people, 150 kids, 4,000 people, 150 kids. 3,000 units times two is 6,000 people. I don't know if 6,000 people are going to have 150 kids at the beginning, but I think that it will increase from there. Generally, you can wait for the playlot, but maybe not, depending on how you want this all to be developed. But I think it's lacking. That's what I have there. Other concerns, the third page, the ordinance that you're... Other concerns, the third page, the ordinance that you're, that you're considering right now has got a formula in it. And the formula basically says that, you can look at the, at the last page of my, of the write-up that I gave you. Right now, the Motorola property that has been rehabbed and the Zurich property, which has been built, great building, they, they, they come out to around 1.6 million square feet, I believe. The formula says, and you can see it on the back page there, for the first 150,000 square feet, you can have 750 residential units. The top part of the chart shows you that you can build, that they can build, your ordinance is allowing 3,250 units just with the, with the office space that's already there. And that could amount to, I don't know what it's going to amount to, is that 6,500 people? Perhaps. I don't know how many kids will that will be, how many seniors that will be, I really don't know. But that is what it allows. And also in the ordinance, it states on page five, it, I do have citations on the pages. It says that the minimum amount of office space that you're aiming for here is, is 3.1 million to 3.5 million square feet of office space. And if that happens, then the developer, your ordinance will allow the developer to build, I, I don't know if this is right or not, because it seems like, it seems high. And I don't think this is realistic, I don't think the developer would do this, 6,250 residential units. Multiply that by two people, that's 12,500 people. We have a park district with 80,000, 80,000 people. Schaumburg's park district probably has 90,000, 100,000 people. That's a lot of people to add to the park districts without giving us any clay to work with as far as green spaces work. And I realize that there will be additional tax revenue 20 years from now. We are not in the TIF agreement as, as far as getting money out of the TIF, let me just put it that way. The school districts and the library are, but we aren't. So that concerns me. And that formula is in the ordinance. And I know that, that the village staff has said, well, that's, that's not going to happen. But it's in the ordinance, so it can happen. And I don't know how that would possibly happen without the, without you getting a 15 or 20-story residential building. But that's really all I had. I, I wanted to just get this on the record. The park district put a lot of thought into this and we're suggesting all these, we're making these comments and making these suggestions to try to make this an even better parcel of property than is in the master plan. We weren't at the table at the beginning of the master plan, but here we are. I, I know the master plan is kind of already in. And here we are at the zoning area and, and we're here at the, at this end saying, can you please, as the specifics of the plan come to life, consider these? And I'm asking the, the developers and the village too, to help us out on this as far as the recreation opportunity is concerned. Okay? Thanks. Any questions as far as what, what we're, what we're dealing with here?
Questions, comments from the board?
I'll make a comment if I may.
Trustee Conley.
I served on the Schaumburg Park District for a long time and very familiar with your district and Fred Hall.
Yep.
Served on some NRPA and some IPRE committees. And I think Palatine runs particularly now, a very professional district. Your comprehensive plan and your planning processes are excellent. And as you've said, if this thing isn't right, people aren't going to want to build here and live here. But I think we also know that since you were incorporated as a park district in '45 and over those years when Fred Hall was involved, what people want in the, in the range of parks as far as playgrounds and things like that have significantly changed. I know you guys are talking about taking out some ball fields and changing those to lacrosse and soccer. So this is a lot.
And pickleball courts.
And what else?
Pickleball.
Oh, pickleball.
Whether or not.
So, you know, this thing is a living document. This is an outline, but I think we want to have just as quality a product and a quality of living conditions as you do and that we will continue to work with the park district as this thing really becomes fleshed out.
Right. And you have two park districts you're dealing with.
Oh, yes.
This is very significant. You have, of course, Schaumburg Park District and us.
But we have been in other places. We've dealt with Hoffman Estates Park District, we have Schaumburg Land, in a number of other communities, and we've, we've always worked cooperatively. So I'm confident that we'll be able to work through these issues.
Good.
Further questions, comments from the board? Trustee Medei.
Yeah, just some clarification maybe from the village manager or our attorney. On a current TIF, when the property changes from one type of property to another, like business to retail or business to residential, how is the tax structure as to, say, for instance, the Palatine Park District? Do they get still a portion of a levy on that particular residential property at a current level or is it estimated?
The EAV is frozen at 2013 levels and increment that is added to it by development goes back into the TIF district to fund other projects.
Okay, so they would get a 2013 level tax per residential structure?
For the, what they're getting in 2013, that's correct.
Correct. For their, if, if, if that, that location is on the north side of the, the line where, you know, the Palatine Park District is.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions, comments from the board?
If I may add to that, as far as the TIF is concerned, the land that's in the Palatine Park District now is mostly pond, parking lot, and grass. Obviously, not, not one resident, not one person is asking us for services from that. So for 45 years, for 50 years, we've been getting tax revenue for, from a commercial property that we've had no residents, that, that was fine by us, I suppose you could say. But the, the tax will be frozen at that, at that level for parking lots, grass, and pond, and a portion of the furthest north building. So there is some tax revenue still going to be coming in, but when you add all the townho, townhomes and so on, obviously the TIF will collect those extra tax dollars. They have to. That's the way you're going to build the streets and the sewers and the water and so on. I understand that. But, you know, so for 20 years, we'll have to figure out how to serve however many thousands of people come into this area. So we'll see. So, but it's a, I, I really want this to be a marketable property. I really want it to have value now, five years from now, 10 years from now, and 20 years from now. You know, sometimes properties perhaps are too dense or, or just not built exactly right. And 20 years from now, things start to change. And obviously, you're on the same boat with me on this. Let's make it, let's make it right. And that's why I'm here, asking basically, make sure the green space is there, make sure the recreational areas is there, and, and make sure everyone's happy with the property.
Further questions, comments from the board?
Thanks, thanks a lot.
Comments from the audience in order?
Julie, anything further from staff?
Do you mind if we clarify the TIF?
Sure. Yeah, you can do that. And then maybe once Matt has finished, you could just clarify what the board is acting on tonight so that everybody understands that.
Matt Frank, so just to clarify the TIF, it's irregardless of change of land use. So whatever that base EAV is frozen at 2013, 2012. So for Palatine, you're looking at about 30 million, 30 and a half million, that was frozen in 2012. So that'll be split up amongst the taxing bodies, no matter if it changes to residential, commercial, office, industrial.
Anything further? Brian?
So to clarify tonight, what you're voting on is to adopt the zone, the text of the zoning ordinance and the design guidelines, which are in your packet. You've previously approved the master plan, which is the vision for the site. These two documents are regulatory documents that guide and facilitate development in accordance with the master plan project. What you're not doing tonight is actually rezoning the property. So we have to wait to do that before we have the plat for the property so we know the actual physical and legal boundaries of the five subzones that I mentioned earlier. So what you're being asked to do tonight is to adopt the text and the regulations. Nothing is actually subject to it until next, next month. And the developer is going to subdivide the property and then we will have all the specific legal descriptions for all the subzones at that time.
Further questions, comments from the board? From the audience, someone want to come forward, express your view? Counsel report?
We need a motion.
There are two items on the, on the agenda.
But it can be one motion, and if it were a combined motion, the motion would be to accept the recommendation of the ZBA and to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 18-049, an ordinance amending chapter 154 of the Schaumburg Municipal Code to create the North District-West zoning district, MD West. It's a new section and it will be the rules for this district.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Clerk, poll the board.
Trustee Daley.
Aye.
Trustee Medei.
Aye.
Trustee Dunham.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Cozak.
Aye.
Trustee Conley.
Aye.
Six, I have votes on these motions carries. Any further counsel reports?
Yes, we will have need to go into closed session this evening at the end of our regular business to discuss the acquisition, potential acquisition of real property. I'll give the exact language at the end of the meeting. That's, that's all I have.
Do we have to have an ordinance on that? Excuse me?
Combined it.
Correct. The motion was to accept the recommendation and adopt.
Okay.
And it's ordinance 18-049. So we're covered.
Thank you.
And then can I ask, do we need a request for audience comments on any other issue before us tonight? He has.
That may not have been clear.
Yeah, it may not have been, but somebody could talk about anything else if they wanted to.
I thought that was clear.
Yeah, I thought.
Well.
Well, I, I think.
No, they don't want to.
Do you want to make a motion, Mark? You were a.
No, 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 that's not a motion.
You can make two motions. President's report? I have nothing to report other than what we have this, this evening. Managers report?
I have no report this evening.
New business to come before the board? Any unfinished business to come before the board? We are going to, are we going to execute, execute?
We do need that, yes.
So an unfinished business or new business, a motion is in order to move into executive session?
Okay, and just so everyone knows that the, when we go into closed session, there, there will be no further proceedings in open session except to adjourn the meeting. So with that, we need a motion to go into closed session in accordance with section 2C 5 of the Open Meetings Act, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, will the clerk please poll the board?
Trustee Cozak.
Aye.
Trustee Conley.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Dunham.
Aye.
Trustee Medei.
Aye.
Trustee Daley.
Aye.
Six, I have votes on these motions carries. Thank you, folks.
Yeah, she's trying to catch us. See you for the reception.